Good morning, my name is Sarah Fosselt, I serve as the Board Administrator for the Texas State Board of Social Worker Examiners. This is the February 2nd Town Hall of Listening Session. We're focused today from 8:30 to 10 on comments and concerns about the ASWB exams. And from 10 to 11:30, we'll be focusing on the impact to field instructors that recent continuing education rules have brought up. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Chair Brumley. Thank you all for attending, we appreciate your participation today.
All right, good morning, everybody, and thank you, Sarah, for setting this up. And thank you all to those that are out there. So what we wanted to do today is give opportunity for folks to give us feedback on first, the ASWB exam. And what I would like to hear is not, hey, I've taken it this many times and I failed it this many times, which is important to us, but if you can add to that statement, reasons why you feel like the exam was a problem or an issue when you took the exam. If you remember situations or questions that you can use as examples, that would be helpful to us to get an understanding about your view of why you think the exam could possibly be biased, or in some way, maybe not as equitable as it could be. So we're going to take opportunity to listen, and as Sarah indicated, this is a listening session. We'll be taking notes and gathering information to report to the board itself. So today, you just have me and Sarah as far as participants from, from the Texas State Board of Social Work Examiners. So Sarah will be timing everyone, you'll have three minutes. And I believe she's going to put a timer up so you can see during the time you're talking how much time you have left. We need opportunity for everyone to speak, so please regard those, those timeframes. Other than that, we'll get started, it's been a little hectic getting started this morning. I'm, we are up in northeast Texas where I live. We have been in an ice storm and this morning about 7:12, I lost all electricity. So had to hurry and get somewhere where I could see y'all. So forgive the fact, I'm just in a hoodie and, and had to get to my office. So we'll get started, Sarah, go ahead with, with whoever wants to talk first.
So if you are logged in by computer, would you please use the raised hand feature? To indicate that you want to give public comment? Or if this is, since this is a listening session, Chair Brumley, I can just go down the list of attendees and see if they have public comment, but let's try the raised hand feature first, I think.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay, we're getting some raised hands here. I don't see anyone at this time who's called in by telephone, and that might not be advertised as an option, so. Okay, we'll go with that. I will, let's see if I can share my screen and still get to the attendees. And I can't. That I know of. Okay, so I'll have to call on the attendee, and then I'll have to switch over and share the screen.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Mr. Francis, you have public comment?
I do, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I totally get you, Brian, I've got three kids at home with me right now, so.
Oh, man.
If one of them jumps on the mic and starts throwing out suggestions, just ignore those.
Okay.
So again, my name is Will Francis, I'm from NASW Texas, and I just want to extend my deep, deep thank you for, for hosting this Town Hall and giving people the opportunity to speak. I appreciated having ASWB at the last meeting, and yet the way they were brought in didn't necessarily seem to give people time to prepare, so, so advertising this ahead of time and doing it, just huge thank you. I, I've been looking around the country and looking and seeing what other states are doing. Massachusetts right now has a super act, which would provide some alternative pathways through the LB and LM. Many other states are following suit. We know the compact is coming down and may very well likely include language around the test, although during the sort of fishing up and drafting there. And I just really encourage this board to think about two key pieces. One is, can we support an alternative method to examine competency as we used to have? And which you, Brian, I know we're very, very involved with. NASW currently has some legislation that we're looking at in that area, and we really hope to see that successful this semester, or pardon me, the session. Our goal is not to take away any value from the license. Our goal is not to take away the license, our goal is to support licensed social workers in Texas. We just have to think about an equitable way to get people there. My big hope is we have a Spanish exam someday, and again, that, as I see, is an equitable way to get people towards Spanish. So I think that AMAC is very, very important, and I just encourage this board, should that legislation goes through, or should they have that opportunity to bring together stakeholders to think about what that, that alternative method could look like? And to utilize a diverse array of social workers out there. And then in addition, I really think this board has to look at the cost. I, I know that there's some statutory requirements there, I know that there are some challenges, but ultimately, if we are able. Sorry, that was the two-year-old. Ultimately, if we are able to, to provide people an opportunity for a one-time cost on this exam that gives them then the ability to come back. I just think that's really going to be important, if you cost it out, you're looking at hundreds of dollars people are paying and not getting licensed. And really supporting and understanding that social work salaries sometimes don't always align with, with those in other spaces in the market. Let's see if we can lift them up as they enter, and so I would really like the board to look at some costs, look at the ability to be flexible there. One time, two times, my own preference would potentially be three times. One fee goes towards that, and I, and I hope that's there. So I know my time's winding down, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. And again, just a huge thank you to Chair Brumley, Director Sarah Fassoltz, and all of the board for providing this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Mariah Boone, you have public comment?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, my name is Mariah Boone, I am a Field Education Director and I'm the co-chair of TFAK. I want to thank y'all for having this Town Hall, I think it's very important. And I would implore the board to take action regarding the serious problems with the licensure exams. I, I honestly was extraordinarily disappointed at the lack of accountability that ASWB expressed during the last board meeting that they gave the presentation at, and I was distressed by the way the board seemed inclined to, um, to go along with that lack of accountability and try to place blame on our universities for what seems to be obvious racial disparities in the test. The, the passage rates can't lie, you know, the, the racial disparities in those are, are glaring. And I would like to see continued research to explore those racial disparities in the pass rates and some follow-up action to make sure that the licensure process is equitable. And, and most of all, I would like to see more accountability on the part of ASWB. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to give public comment? We have 23 attendees, and I see no raised hands. There we go. Bradley Bogdan, you have public comment?
Hi, my name is Bradley Bogdan, I'm an LCSW here in Texas. And my original licensure many years ago came in California, a state that doesn't use the LMSW exam. There's no exam requirement to begin accruing hours towards your LCSW there. And in my experience, that wasn't a significant impediment to having quality social workers. There were obviously still a bunch of other requirements towards ensuring that folks who got that LMSW license were appropriate and ethical and skilled enough to provide good care and continue their education towards independent licensure. So just contributing my two cents that exams at some of these levels are not necessarily the only way of ensuring quality social work services. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sarah, could I ask for one point of clarification from Bradley, can you leave him up there, please?
Sure.
So Bradley, did you say you were LCSW or LMSW in California?
I was an LMSW in California, I'm an LCSW here in Texas.
Okay, okay, so the LMSW in California at the point you came through, they were not testing for the LM, but you could, you could join a process to become LCSW without having attained LMSW? Is that what I understood?
No, I was gonna say, I moved to Texas after my LMSW hours in California. So I didn't take the test for an LCSW there. That was around the same time they were changing tests there and everything. But to begin, as an LMSW, you just had to meet the other requirements such as graduating master's program that was accredited. I forget the, the rest of the requirements they have, but there was no exam requirement to gain your LMSW and begin accruing hours, there was only a test at the LCSW level.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me.
That, that license, Bradley, is that license, it, it's just a mechanism to get you the hours needed for the LCSW? It's not a true standalone license?
Correct, it, it exists, it exists as a similar license to the one we have here in Texas for LMSWs.
Well, yeah, I understand, but you, you can't just, can you just get the LMSW and just stay in LMSW forever in California? Back then, can you just, that's all you can be and? Or, or is that, is that the license you have to have in order to accrue the hours for the LCSW?
That, that is the license you have to have to approve the hours for your LCSW.
Okay, so, so do people, at that, back then, did people just get the LMSW and not accrue hours for the LCSW?
Theoretically, you could. But that wasn't what my peers did at the time, but.
Yeah, okay.
Did, 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 this is Brian again, did California allow you to practice with an LMSW license at some level?
I mean, the part of your practice privileges was to do psychotherapy under supervision, if that's your question.
Under supervision, but there was no independent pathway for an LMSW?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Chair Brumley, it's my understanding that that is a, that, that license in California was a stepping stone only to the, the LCSW is kind of my understanding of how it was working.
Yeah, I think Oklahoma has, or did, I don't know if they still do, they had something sooner than that. All right, that's all my questions, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Bogdan. Jamie Parker, you have public comment?
Good morning, thank you for allowing us the opportunity today in the Town Hall. My name's Jamie Parker, I am a clinical faculty member and practicum director at the University of Houston Graduate College of Social Work. I want to echo Will Francis's sentiment that the hope here is really to have more licensed social workers in the state of Texas. What I was looking for in Stacy Hardy Chandler's presentation in the last meeting from ASWB was really a link to how the exam links to public protection and account, accountability. Because I think that the licensure itself is what works to protect the public and hold social, social workers accountable, particularly in Texas. So I, it seems like there would be more oversight of social workers with more licensed social workers in Texas as well as meeting the job demand for mental health professionals in the state. The other thing that was talked about was that there are barriers upstream from, before getting to the ASWB exam, which is why MSW programs like the one at the GCSW and other programs around the country have moved to eliminate the GRE as an admissions requirement specifically to remove barriers and increase diversity and reduce disparity among applicants. So it is something that is also being addressed upstream by eliminating exams that have not been able to prove that the exam itself is linked to ethical and professional practice. So I think the other thing that she said was that, do we blame the thermometer for the fever? Which I think, I've continued to think about that metaphor a lot since she said it. But I think that really, in this case, this metaphor means that they admitted that the pass rates signal a significant disparity in the exam itself, which is what the illness is. So I really implore the board to think about how eliminating the exam would actually increase the number of licensed social workers who would be under the auspice of the Texas Board and be able to be held accountable and be able to protect the public in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Whitney Luce, you have public comment?
Thank you, hello, I am the Director of Field Education at Baylor University School of Social Work. And I am also serving as co-chair of the Texas Field Educators Consortium this year. Thank you so much for taking the time to have this Town Hall meeting, to hear from those in the profession who are concerned, really appreciate the intentionality of that. I do echo, of course, some of the other comments that have already been made this morning, but would just push for the board to really put pressure on ASWB to research and find other ways to, to assess readiness to hold a social work license. And there certainly are major racial disparities in the passage rates, and that should be called as it is. And really, we in all of the universities want to encourage our students to hold a license as a form of protection for the public. But it is really challenging to do so whenever there are such, such disparities that are clearly in place. I also want to call out the cost of the exam and retaking the exam. Obviously, retaking the exam does put even more financial burden on those trying to enter the profession and serve. And we know that we need social workers in this state, and there are such great needs. So I also ask for consideration of cost of the exam on the front end the first time, but then, as Will Francis had stated, considering removing the cost of retaking the exam. And then also just want to urge the board to ask ASWB to continue providing free webinars and licensure preparation so that social work educators and students can continue to get the, the resources as changes are made without cost associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wrong thing. Does anyone else have public comment? I see we're up to 30 attendees. We've had public comment from one, two, from about five.
Is there, is there anyone out there who's, who's willing to discuss their actual experience with the test? What they saw as questionable in the questions?
Here we go. Janine?
Janine, you're on mute.
Hello, can you guys hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome, so good morning, everybody. I am a medical social worker. I'm so happy that I had the opportunity to speak with you all regarding the exam. I would say specifically with my experience. I've taken the test four times so far, and as everybody has stated so far, it's definitely very expensive. I'm going for my fifth try, but in regards to just like mental health, it is very stressful, just even confidence. I feel like it was me being in the field, I've been in the field for eight years now. I don't understand why the test has to make the people that have felt it numerous times, why we feel like we're not capable or just competence is just not there, even though we do the work every day. I have experience in child welfare, and as I said, I'm a medical social worker now. So just in terms of taking a test multiple times, even if you're utilizing multiple of study materials or programs, just to have to retake the test and question who you are as like a social worker, even just like a person, it's just mentally draining. I am a, a part of a few different Facebook groups that have people who've taken the test, the test, and a lot of people are just expressing so much like frustration and anxiety. And honestly, I feel like it would be great if even, you know, the board of ASWB could just join the support groups online just to see the struggles that people face. And I mean, these are people from all walks of life, you know, age, ethnicities. It, it really doesn't matter, like so many different people that are just trying to pass the test, and they don't feel as though they're able to, because it's just so many things like stacked up against them. And like I say, even from my own experience, they, there, it's been questioned that I feel as though just doesn't make sense to have on the test. Whereas though the, the study material that you review, and then when you take the test, it's like, where did this come from? Like, why are they having statistical questions regarding, you know, like domestic violence or like breast cancer? It's, I feel like it's just certain things that they ask on the test that isn't included with the study material that I've studied in the past. So I also feel as though it would be great if they had like a passing window, instead of it just being, you have to pass by a particular number. My fourth time that I took it, well, my third time that I took it, I was close, I, I almost passed like one point. But I missed it literally by one point. And it stressed me out, so I just want them to take that into deep consideration that a lot of people are trying to pass. And that's pretty much it.
So Janine, are you, are you attempting the LMSW or the LCSW exam?
The LMSW exam.
The LMSW, so are you currently an LBSW?
Um, no, I mean, I have my masters, I don't have, I don't have like my, my MSW. I mean, I have my MSW, I don't have my license yet.
Okay, and, and so you're attempting to take the L, the Licensed Master Social Worker exam?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anyone else like to comment? Kelly Kaiser?
Hi, my name is Kelly Kaiser, and I work, have worked as a social worker for the past 17 years in primarily disability and aging fields. And I am really wanting to take the test to begin with, but I'm having difficulty with the ASWB and registration issues because when I tried to get my transit from my school to be sent, I was going back and forth between the school and ASWB to get my registration in, and I had filled out all the paperwork, got all the documentation, and I cannot get past that step. And I really wanted to take my LMSW test. I've got my LBSW licensing out of the way, but I wanted to take the test to get the LMSW. But I cannot seem to get past that issue because I have gotten married since I graduated. And there, the, the registration is asking for the license, all my driver's license is the same name, so it's not driving where the registration that my new name is. So I'm having a lot of trouble with the ASWB in that regard, and I can't seem to get past it. I worked for months and months on it, and I cannot seem to get past that issue. And I'm still, so I gave up, and I still want to take the test and would love to be able to study for it while on a medical leave, and I just can't get past that part.
So Kelly, your, the way I'm understanding is you graduated with your maiden name.
Correct.
You changed your, 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 you legally changed your name now.
Right.
And your transcript is in your maiden name.
Right.
And ASWB is not recognizing your transcript because it's your maiden name?
Correct, I cannot get, get them to get, I don't know who is sending what, but I've requested the school to send repeatedly my transcript to ASWB, and the board can't really do anything because they've done, they've approved it already on their end. So it's between ASWB and the school, and I cannot get past that point. And I have worked on it for about eight months straight, and I just can't seem to get anywhere, and I've asked for supervisors and I've done everything I can, and I can't get past that part.
Has ASWB asked you for a copy of your marriage certificate and a, and an updated copy of your driver's license?
No, I, I could not even get to that point through ASWB.
Okay, is, is Kelly, is Kelly Kaiser the name that we have in your database?
My name in the database is Kelly Popol Rider Kaiser.
Okay. If, if you will allow me, I'll forward your, your information to our Assistant Licensing Manager and ask her to take a look at it and to work with ASWB. Do we have an up, an up-to-date email address in our database?
Yes.
Okay. May I proceed that way?
Yes, that's correct.
Sarah, she's going to need an updated driver's license where they're gonna let her set for that exam, though, correct?
I'm, I'm guessing that, that yes, they, they, they will require the proper documentation because they're trying to protect the integrity of their exam and not let someone usurp someone else's identity.
Right.
Get exactly what's needed, and so that's where I was stuck. I don't know how to get the transcript to, you know, ASWB.
So the transcript name isn't going to change. I, I suspect what they need is a document that shows the transition, such as the marriage certificate that shows that your name changed, and then a current driver's license that has your married name on it.
Yes.
But, but I don't know that for sure, so I'd like to get our Assistant Manager to, to work on it with ASWB and let me know for sure, because I don't want to give you the runaround more than you have.
That would be great, I appreciate someone taking the time to do that, because I just kind of gave up after that.
So Kelly, do you have an updated driver's license?
Yes, I do have an updated driver's license, I've got my marriage certificate, all of that.
Okay.
So, okay. Anything else you wanted to add, Ms. Kaiser?
Now, I do suggest that after learning on the Facebook groups, seeing the difficulties that people have, I kind of agree that some of the statistical information. um, I kind of agree that some of the statistical information, um, some of the very, it's very difficult to see um, social work questions that are really not utilized in actual practice um, on the exam when you're in a specific field for a long period of time. Now, um, mind you, I do work with um, people with disabilities, families, homelessness, all of this. But it's still very difficult to um, reconcile that piece of it. But I do understand there needs to be a way to assess new social workers and usher them in. So, I totally agree with um, ways to do that. Um, just um, keeping in mind that sometimes the reality is a little bit different. So.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Any other public comment? Ilyana, do you have a public comment?
Hi, yes, good morning. Um, I had a question in regards to um, is there a way on the profile for um, BHAC um, that it shows uh, the history of how many times you've taken the test? Um, only reason I ask that is because um, I have no record of me taking my exam um, previously that I did not pass, but I have other um, coworkers and friends who every time that they take the test, they, on their profile, they have record of it. Um, and I don't have that on mine.
I don't know the answer to that question. Sarah, do you?
So, I, I know in our database, staff um, before, before ASWB was under contract to do the exam pre-approval, staff would record each exam score in the database. But that is not part of the databla- database that is displayed to the public. So, um, I'm not sure how, un- unless, unless someone is calling or emailing staff with a public information re- request for their own records. I'm not sure how your, how your colleagues, sorry, I let the timer run while I was talking. I'm not sure how your colleagues would get that information from the board as opposed to getting that information from ASWB. Am I, am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
I believe so because I've caught and asked about it and I can't get a clear answer on it either. So, when you're logging in. So, I previously had a temporary license. Um, that wasn't even recorded on my profile either. Um, and so, I've looked at other people's profile where it's shown like each time that they've registered for the test. Uh, there's no information on my profile to show that I registered or even have taken an exam. And so, I just thought that that was weird that on my end, there's nothing or no recollection of me taking a test versus someone else who has taken a test two or three times. And each time that they've taken and registered, their information is on their profile.
Are you looking at a, at, at the council's online database profile or are you looking at an ASWB website profile?
Um, it's the Texas, it's not the ASWB. It's the, me, look at it. I believe it's where you go to do your application and all of that um, information to put in when you go to reapply to take the exam.
Okay. Are you willing to give me your last name over the air or would you like to send an email to us, say, attention, Sarah, in the subject line?
Um, I can give you my last name, that's fine.
Sorry?
I can give you my last name, that's fine. My first name, I don't know if it's showing as two L's, but it's I-L-A-N-A.
I-L-A-N-A, okay.
Last name is B as in boy, U-N, D as in David, A-G-E.
Okay. I will, I will look into it after the end of this session. And you have an email address in our database that's current and up to date?
Yes.
Okay. And I will, I will contact you by email with what I find out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Was there anything else that you wanted to share about your experience?
Um, I think for me and my experience, um, it's difficult. Um, like I said, I, the first time that I um, ta- took the test was last June. Um, and I haven't, I'm actually studying to retake the exam. Um, I think for me, it's a lot because my concentration is child and families. And so, a lot of the uh, my experience is um, like in the school system and things like so. So, for me, I have to study uh, a lot of things like medication and things like that, that I mean, I learned in school, but um, or not really. Um, and I, I, I just think that that schools should do a better job of helping us prepare for the exams. I know that some campuses have um, testing, um. They have classes where they go over the test or teachers that give or create a, a guideline for them. Um, but I just, for me and my personal experience, my master's program, I don't think equipped me to be prepared to to take the exam. Um, and so, I think that that's something that should be correlated, I guess, with the universities on ways to kind of help improve in getting uh, social workers um, ready to take the exam because it's a total different ballgame sitting in front of that test versus doing the classwork and the papers and things that we do um, during our program.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Johnson, you have comment?
Um, yes, uh, my name is Jessica Johnson. Um, I have taken the clinical exam six times. Um, just recently passed a few months ago on my sixth try. Um, I just wanted to uh, basically say that um, it is uh, very disheartening when you uh, fail by two points each time. That was my experience. Um, that I have to repay the fee and then the waiver um, is only offered, I believe, twice in a year. And then you have to wait so long and it's hard for, you know, maybe some folks um, with the retention piece of it, being able to retain the information, um, maybe tighten up on a few areas and still uh, uh, retain the pertinent information to take the test again. You one can lose a lot of the, the knowledge that they've learned um, with the big gaps um, in between uh, taking the exam. So, I would, I would uh, uh, submit that maybe uh, that is looked at, that more waivers are offered uh, for folks who are five points or less. In my case, it was two points, two points, two points the entire time. Um, not to mention the thousands of dollars um, that was spent um, within those six times. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, um, if you could hang on just a second, um, do, do you, I know you don't remember all the questions, but in, in your experience in taking the exam, do you remember where you felt stumped the most?
It would, the, the, the questions would be uh, kind of vague. It would, it would say something like um, uh, you're working um, uh, with a, with a couple. Um, and uh, you, you're working with a couple. Uh, the couple is uh, working on uh, marital issues or something along the lines of that. Um, we were always taught that you don't talk with the couple outside. It, it, anything that needs to be discussed is discussed within the um, within the therapy. And the, the answers did not remotely, you know, match up with the, the, the study, study material or, or things like that. Um, and, and so, it was, it was just very um, uh, very disheartening, you know, when you go out there and get the test results and it's a fail and it's um, you know, um, two points, one point, you know, six times um, in a row can be very paralyzing emotionally.
Oh, it's gotta be frustrating that, you know, I think I'd rather fail by thirty than nine.
Right, right. And you go back in and you, you, you apply for the waiver, pay again. And then um, you know, uh, psych yourself up, this time is gonna be my time. And then you could, you come out of there and it's the same thing um, over and over.
What did you do personally different for your final attempt?
The final attempt, um, it kept saying that I was kind of low with the ethics and the human development. So, I just focused um, specifically on that and the human development um, uh, part. Um, so, I just focused, focused on that. And then I changed locations. You know, I said, well, maybe it's the location. I don't know. It's no science backing that, but I changed locations. And I did and it, you know, it worked. Um.
Now, from my, from my understanding, all the Pearson Learning Centers look exactly alike. Is that what you found?
No, no. The first time, the first five times I took it, I was off San Felipe in Houston area, uh, six-ten by the Galleria. And then the last time I went, uh, Willowbrook Mall, uh, two-forty-nine um, area. And so, it was a totally different.
Did the inside of the, all the stuff inside look the same?
All the stuff inside looked the same. Uh.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Um, but yes, I just want to convey that it's, it's, it, um, the, the, the gaps um, with the waiting, with the um, the, the waivers. If there could be more opportunity instead of the, I believe, two waivers per year and maybe some more would be um, um, helpful um, to, to my colleagues.
Okay. That's, that's the automatic requirement that, that a examiner wait ninety days before re-attempting? And you're talking about a waiver of that ninety day? They only allow two per year?
Uh, right. But if you're five, you know, two points, three points away, you know, you're, we're, we're so close, you know.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Shelley Gonzalez, you have public comment?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Shelley Gonzalez and I took my test many years ago. Um, I, so a lot has changed since then and I work now in social work education. And I just kind of want to echo a couple of things that were said. Um, I agree that the way to really protect the public is through getting people into licensure because then there's oversight and mentoring and things that can happen in order to um, have a better idea of who's working in social work. Um, and I think that the exam is preventing that. I also think that just to kind of speak to what Ilyana said, that um, you know, maybe the master's degree doesn't prepare students to take the test. I think that's a testing problem to be completely fair and honest. I think we have the Council on Social Work Education that gives a lot of accreditation standards that um, programs are beholden to and have to do a lot of monitoring, a lot of assessment, a lot of intentionality in the way that they teach. And I would say that those CSWE accreditation requirements and learning competencies are relevant um, to the way that social work is changing and the way that social workers engage with the changing climate of clients and the needs of clients. Um, and I think that the issue happens when you've got students in class who are learning to kind of use their best judgment, to use ethical decision-making models, to make decisions in gray areas. And then students are being asked to take a test to get their license where they're basically saying, hey, we're gonna ask you a question and the answer is, you know, very obvious. It's yes or no. It's concrete. It's very literal. Um, which I don't know if you've ever practiced with human beings, but that's not my experience. So, I think that that's the place where the test is really difficult. It's really hard to measure um, the ability of a social worker. And what the test doesn't measure is somebody's ability to use an ethical decision-making model. Um, somebody's ability to think critically, somebody's ability to um, exercise advocacy and advocate for social justice. And so, I think those are all things that we can agree as social workers are really primary values in our profession. And for the test or the reflection of licensure to basically dissuade people to do that seems really ill-conceived in my mind. And I do think the other piece is with all the evidence of the racial disparity in the exam, I think it's an issue that social workers are not representative of the populations they serve. And they're not able to be representative in culture and practice as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to offer public comment? We have about forty-three attendees. And we've heard from seven or eight individuals. Anyone else? Would anyone like to share how they prepared for the exam? Jamie Banks?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, good morning. Um, so, I will like to say this. I, I had to take the test multiple times. And I paid a lot of money on practice or, you know, all these different um, programs that are outs to actually help you pay from Don Appgar, Agents of Change. Uh, I think it was TWC or something like that. I paid so much, probably like over a thousand dollars from all these different programs. Um, the last one I actually used, I think, worked the best. But I just think that that's like a really waste of time and money because we have to pay for the exam. We have to pay for, you know, the paperwork to even like take the exam. Um, um, and even after you failed the exam, you have to pay for the exam again. So, it, it really is like a money hustle to get to your license. Um, and I just think that that's not like a, a good factor for social workers coming into this field because it's like a money thing. We already are underpaid. And to have to go through this whole process of the exam and these exams are hard or they're just not like real-life situations, the way we deal with, like she said, humans. We deal with people. And so, that test is not like really related to what we do. I don't know, you know, what their point is with it. But with me taking that test over and over and over, I don't really feel like what I learned on the test from passing it. It, it comes to a point where it's like, hey, I just want to pass the test. I don't care. Like, I don't think I'm learning nothing from it. But I have to pass this test to be licensed. And to be licensed to be, make more money so I can pay my bills and take care of my family. So, it, it is really like a waste of time um, and money and resources to have to go through all these study programs to take this one exam that I don't feel like either a bachelor's program or a master's degree program prepares for. Um, and that's really it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Amara?
Oh, hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I um, sat for my exam in twenty-seventeen. And I just hopped on, um, so a friend shared this with me, so I'm actually glad. Uh, so, I'm just gonna just comment, um, how I prepared for my exam. Um, I'm not a BSW. Um, I got my undergrad in something completely different. And so, since I've been in social work since, a licensed social worker since twenty-seventeen, what I've actually found um, to the point of the exam is that it, I might have actually um, had an advantage because I didn't come in with that base or that foundation knowledge that you have when you go and you start off as a BSW. Um, I literally, outside of the fact that I think I'm just a generally good test taker, I still had the test anxiety. I remember I like put it off for like another three months or something like that. I think they give you an opportunity to like put it off. But I just got a book and like did the little apps and made flashcards and I passed on my first try. Um, but I do think that I didn't go in with a lot of the gray area that we do encounter um, as social workers um, sitting for that exam. And then the other thing that I wanted to say, just to kind of piggyback off the last comment, is I do think that it would be beneficial if may, especially from a money perspective for social workers, if perhaps maybe we just prepared for the MSW um, from the get-go. Because there's not really, in my experience, a lot of opportunity for a BSW to really get employment or make a lot of money. It, I mean, you, it's kind of like, okay, if you're not gonna go to maybe do the LCSW or definitely not the LMSW, then it's kind of you're shooting yourself in the foot if you just stopped at the BSW. And so, from a money perspective and, you know, the And so from a money perspective and, you know, the financial investment that you do put into your education, I don't know, I don't personally see the purpose in just getting an LBSW if the goal is not to prepare those students to go further. And that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. DeJaya Johnson?
Deja.
Deja, thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. I took my exam for the first time in twenty, twenty-twenty-two. I'm sorry, in twenty-twenty-one. Want to say maybe in May of that year. And I was unsuccessful on my first attempt. And then I only passed, I missed it by about seven questions, well, seven points. And I was a little discouraged, but I did realize that I hadn't studied or prepared as much as I should have. But I became very overwhelmed when trying to study due to just kind of hearing some of the stories that other people were sharing about their experience with studying for the exam. A lot of the different study materials that were out there in reference to the exam. And then I was also trying to work at the same time. I think that just kind of became a little overwhelming. So after waiting my ninety days, I used the Pocket Prep Behavior Health app. And then some of the best advice that I got was from a LCSW who advised me to study for my exam and take my exam as if I was a white woman with unlimited resources. And so in doing that, I shifted the way that I was thinking about the questions when I was reading them. And I started thinking about the questions from that type of mindset even while I was studying. And I noticed that I was starting to pass more of my study questions using the Behavior Health Pocket Prep app on the first time. And then understanding like, you know, why this answer was right. But having that mindset going into my studying for the exam as well as taking the exam was something that I think was very beneficial for me. And then the Pocket Prep app was the only thing that I used in preparation for my exam the second time that I took it. And I think I only needed like a ninety-nine to pass and I ended up with a hundred and thirteen points my second go around. So that's been my experience with the exam. But I've had some of my cohorts whom I've graduated with who have taken the exam three or four times and still have been unsuccessful. So I do see a lot of disparities within the exam itself. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Jessica Johnson's raised her hand, we've heard from her before. Is it okay to go ahead and repeat? I don't have any other one with a hand raised.
Sure, if we don't have anybody else.
Jessica Johnson?
I just wanted to speak to what I used to prepare just for the benefit of the repeat test takers. It was TDC and fill in the gaps. So just wanted to say that part.
Can you, just for my curiosity, how do you assess the quality of a exam prep?
I had, it was from me, since I had taken it so many other times. I had used other study material. And for me, it was being able to retain and the repetition and being able to study with that and then use the, the, the study books, the, the test questions. I was able to get the test questions right and get high scores. So that helped my self-esteem when I got ready to take the test. I felt like I was making improvement. And their TDC was very, very close to the other versions of the test that I had when I would go in and take the test. They were very, very similar. So that kept me motivated that I was on the right track with the study material. So then on the last time when it said to study up on the ethics and the human development, I used the TDC for the ethics. And then for the human development, I used fill in the gaps since he was, he had more specific material related to that.
Thank you, that, that's helpful. I was wondering, before you purchased the exam prep materials, did you hear about the word of mouth or how did you?
Yes, it was a lot of word of mouth, a lot of Facebook groups, a lot of support groups, of folks saying TDC was the way. And just like the previous caller, I too was given the same advice to think of a, a, a white person that had unlimited resources. Don't think about me and the resources that I would, you know, realistically have. Think of no, you know, money is no object and what would you do in a perfect scenario? And so like she said, that, that helped a lot as well.
Thank you. Darrell, you have comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd just like to share a few things coming from a male perspective, if that is okay. So my wife and I both took the exam together in two thousand and fifteen. We both went to the same undergraduate programs as well as the same grad programs. The differences that we had where we were both working in case management, but for two different agencies. She focused mainly on children and family for her job. I focused more on the community administration portion for my job. So I think that gave me quite an advantage in taking the exam. We studied for about three months together, paying for material to study, which I thought did not make sense, being that we were paying thousands of dollars for a university. So it seems like paying to go to school, to receive a degree does not automatically put you in a position to potentially pass the licensing exam. If we then have to go out and buy extra material, just prepare for the exam. So I thought that was a waste of time and money because then it makes it seem like you don't need a degree. You just need to be able to pay for material for an exam and then take your chances on passing it or not. Again, I think because of, from a male perspective, my mindset is a little bit different in my thinking. I'm more of a give a straight answer without including any emotions in it. But when you look at some of the jobs that many case managers have, not only are you doing it based on what the rules of the job says, you're also doing it based on what do you feel that would be best? And I think that exam totally goes against. And so I think that's the advantage that I had over my wife by me being, having that leadership role as well as having a role in community practice. It made the exam a little bit more simpler for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Hicks?
Yes, ma'am, I would just like to say how I prepared for my exam. I'm an MSW in the state of Texas. I have taken the exam five times. Initially, when I first took the exam, I didn't quite have a study plan. I just wanted to see what I should expect and how I should study when I first took the exam. But the other four times I've taken it, I've had a strategic plan where I've gotten up at five o'clock in the morning and studied two hours prior, prior to getting my child up and getting ready for, to take him to school and then to go to work. But this most, most recent time where I've taken the exam, I still had that same study plan. I used TDC. I used the Don Appgar book in which I passed all their practice exams, their mock exams. I passed all of those well above one oh-seven. But this last time that I took the exam, I failed by twelve points. And it was kind of discouraging because I was passing like all my practi, practice exams, the ASWB practice exam, I passed that as well. And I think it honestly just came down to really bad test anxiety.
Christina, do you experience test anxiety and other, like, like during your degree, when you were seeking your degree?
Yes. Well, not, not, I don't think I did. But I was a really bad procrastinator and I kind of felt like I did my best work like at last minute.
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Hicks?
No, ma'am, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thought I saw another hand, but no, I'm not seeing it. Oh, there it is. Melissa Requenes?
Yes, I was trying to look for my little screen. I don't know if you can, if I can be seen there. It's not showing me on my iPad, so I don't know.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, but your video's not on, but we can hear you.
Okay, but y'all have it like set like that, right? With no video?
I.
That's fine, that's fine.
I don't know enough about the technology to.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, I just had a question. Is the board actually, I mean, considering making these changes like soon? Are they just, just taking these comments into consideration? I mean, like, where is it at right now? Because I'm currently in an MSW program fixing to graduate in August. And so I wanted to attend to, you know, see what, what is it that we're looking at as far as, as testing-wise or what is the board considering? Are they actually considering making changes or is it going to stay the same for a while? Would this take years? Like, what, what's the process or what's the, you know, right now, where are we at as far as that's concerned?
So Melissa, I'll give you my version and then Darrell, if you want to get, you want to jump in at any time. So the, the test for the state of Texas is in statute or law. So, so it is something that would require legislative action for us to, to change the actual, or, or to remove, to do anything to, to, other than have a test would, would require action from the legislators. So is it going to be quick? No, is the easy answer to that question, Melissa. But we are taking information so that we can make, so we can have information to make decisions, to present these decisions to inquiring parties as they ask or if we need to, you know, try to support one way or the other. So if you're graduating in August, I can just pretty much guarantee you the test will still be a part of the licensure process in August. Darrell, anything you want to add to that or did I say it right?
You were spot on.
Okay. So what, what we're really looking for today, Melissa, is, is why people feel like they experience biased questions in the exam. That's what, that's what ASWB is looking at from, from that side of the window, is they want to know, you know, what, what are people experiencing that they feel like is biased? They support the fact that their test is legally justifiable. And there is a, a sort of a court case, I guess. It's with the Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission out of New York where there is a, currently a charge to be looked at to determine if the EEOC determines that the test may be biased in some way. But what we have is information that shows us that certain groups do not perform as well. However, what we don't know is why is that the case? So, you know, one of the things that come up is people who are older as first-time test takers don't perform as well. People of color don't perform as well. Males don't perform as well, but there's a whole lot fewer of us taking it too. So, you know, there's all kinds of, of information that we're trying to gather to determine what's going on with this test. And one thing that, that I've heard y'all talk about this morning is, you know, options and ways to, to look at it differently. We, we are open to, to input as well to look at ways other than testing for licensure. Will Francis talked about AMAC, which, for those of you don't know, AMAC went away when, when the Sunset Commission made some changes and we moved over into BHAC. But it was an opportunity, it's called Alternative Method for Exam Certification, in which individuals could basically study and write papers that were then scored by an agent of the board and you could earn your LMSW. Now, it had no pathway beyond that, other than the LMSW. So you, you can't move it from state to state because other states require testing currently as a, as a pathway to licensure in their state. So, so there were some drawbacks to it, but it did allow individuals in Texas to go through a separate process after they had been unsuccessful on the test. I believe they had to take it three times and be unsuccessful within five points. So, so it's things like that, that, that we're open to hearing. But you are correct, today is a listening session to lead us so that the board has information from the public that we can take and say, hey, here's information that we need to make quality decisions.
Okay.
All right, and so anything else, Melissa? I took part of your time, you go ahead if you've got anything else.
Oh, that's okay. I, I mean, I, I have a LBSW and I took that over twenty years ago. I don't remember feeling any biased on that, in that exam, but again, that was twenty years ago. But I, I will comment that I do have several friends that have obtained their MSW degrees and have not been able to pass the test. And, you know, some of them, to this day, still have not. I have a cousin that got her BSW, I mean, LMSW, I'm sorry, from one of the best schools here in, in the state and couldn't pass the test. Finally, after twenty years, she did. And so it's just, I, I don't know, but she didn't tell me she experienced any biases. But, well, I guess we'll just see what happens in August.
Well, I, I will wish you the, the, the best of study procedures and, and success on the test.
Thank you.
Ginger Lucas, you have comment?
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Ginger Lucas. I'm a clinical faculty at the University of Houston Graduate College of Social Work. And I want to thank you first for providing this town hall to allow us some space to discuss our concerns. And also thank those who've shared their experiences with the test-taking. That takes a lot of courage to explain all of that and, and I think it helps give us some context. I, I think it's nice that people are tuning in today and sharing their tips for the shortcuts and the ways around the take, test-taking and, and, and passing the test and what they've done to kind of cut corners, to figure out the way to, you know, be successful with the test. But I think that is extremely problematic. And I think if we look at the, you know, what we were just talking about, the, the racial and the age disparities and the pass rates, that is something we have to address. We don't really even need to know why that's happening. We need to fix the test or we need to find another pathway for people to achieve licensure. I think that as social workers, when we think about our charge for economic justice and we're listening to the thousands of dollars people are spending on their education first and then trying to retake this exam, doing who knows what kinds of expensive prep work. You know, just to, to receive a license to practice when, you know, they should be fully prepared. They should be fully prepared coming from an accredited program, um, that's overseen by the Council on Social Work Education. I just think that, that this is extremely problematic and we have to. Find a way, um, to, you know, where you said that you're looking at, you know, what do we need to do with the test? And I think the first thing is to think about who is creating the questions. Where are these questions coming from? Is there a diverse group of people that are, um, sitting at, at the licensing table? Deciding how to, to, um, develop the questions. And, you know, I think that would be the first step, but I, I really just want to underscore what Will Francis said about alternate pathways to licensure. Um, and I just want to go on the record to, to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ginger, just, it was, it was Ginger Lucas who was just talking, right? Okay, I thought that's what I had. Ginger, one of the things and, and everybody listening, one of the, one of the places that you can go, so you indicated how the question is created and who's doing it. Any academic, i- i- any practicing professional academic in, in the United States, Canada, or any of the territories. Can make application through ASWB currently to become, they call them item riders. And there is a process for that that's on their website. It's ASWB.org. And if you would just, you know, to, 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 if you're, if you're not interested in that level, but you want to know, hey, who's doing this? You can go to that webpage and you can look at and sort of see a little background. On the item riders, uh, see a picture, things like that. But, but that is information that, that is currently available. If you didn't know where to look, it is there.
Thank you. I think the other question would be then who gets to make the final decision on what those items are that get entered into the exam? What are the quote unquote good questions, um, that have?
I can tell you my, my understanding, and this is going to be the, the Brian definition, so this is probably not going to be meet ASWB quality. So out of, an item rider sends in, um, you know, they're, they're given information about how, you know, they go to a training about how to ride an item. Then they are charged with writing items. They go in, an editor reads them. They go back and forth. Yeah, Sarah's pulled it up. There's, there's the committee that is looking at it. Right now, but they go in and they look at, they look at questions that are submitted. And once those questions are submitted, they then, um, go through an approval process through that committee and the item riders. There they are. The, uh, the, the folks that write these questions have their questions. Proofed. Once a question is decided, hey, this is termed a good question. Um, it is put on the exam. The exam itself, when you take it, has a hundred and seventy questions. Twenty of those questions, and you don't know which twenty they are, are deemed prep or test questions. So they're not part of your score, but information is pulled from them and they look at, they look at demographics and they say, hey. This question was answered this way by this demographic, so on and so forth. And then a decision is made whether it is a question that is used on one of the ASWB exams.
And just, what do you make of the feedback we've heard here today? That thinking like a white woman with unlimited resources helps me pass the exam, like.
I don't, I don't know how, I, I don't know how I'm ready to feel about that because that's, that's first time I've heard it for one. And then I, I wonder, um. I don't, I personally don't know how to feel like a white woman with unlimited rea- I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to think that way. So I don't know the process that somebody would go through to look at a question differently like that. I think that's a sad state of affairs if that's how somebody has to look at a question to answer it. I, I do agree with that. Um, but I don't know how that, how somebody can process that in the timeframe of a test. So, um, that's, that's just my take on it. All right, Sarah, who's next? We got about ten minutes left on this topic.
Erica Velecas.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Erica. I'm a Director of Social Services at an FQHC in, in Houston. Um, and I, I simply, I, I don't know if this is helpful, but I simply, I would like to just reiterate what everyone said. Um, reiterate what Ginger's just stated. Um, I ha- as a, you know, Director of a, a, a large FQ, I did left, large FQHC at Houston, I, there are. Over twenty social workers on my team. Many of them have kind of, have been at our organization for, for many, many years. In the last few years, just based off of state requirements, um, and getting reimbursed. We've had to require that social workers have a licensure to, um, to get hired at our agency. I've, you know, in my position as director, I've been able to kind of grandfather in all of the social workers that have been unable to, to achieve their licensure. Um, by, or unable to pass the licensure exam. Um, and we have quite a few of our social workers that have many, many years of social work experience with master's degrees. That have time and time again, they, you know, some of our staff are, have taken the exam five or six times already and have been unable to successfully. Pass and, um, most more, most recently, one of my staff members was, didn't pass by one point. Um, and all of these staff members, I do identify as social workers of color, people of color. Um, there are, as I mentioned, they've been in the field for many, many years. They are wonderful, excellent social workers. Which is why I, as you know, their supervisor, I, I have, you know. Jumped hurdles to make sure that they stay at the agency because that, that exam in no way reflects their professionalism and their quality of work. And their, and them being a social worker. Um, and I've also witnessed throughout time and time again, having them having to take their exam. Um, just the emotional, emotional draining of the exam, um, you know, just not, you know, again, not passing. The, the physical, the toll it's taking on their life, you know, many of these staff members have children, grandchildren. And so having to, you know, take a day, you know, to, to go and take the exam. Um, and I will say, all of these staff members, we've been able to fund lots of training for them. So training materials, um, courses that, you know, University of Houston, courses at University of Texas, private tutors, um, special apps. And so the training is not an issue and the financial, we've been able to fund. But I also realized that not all social workers have that opportunity. Um, and the, the test itself, having to, the financial toll of having to ta- retake over and over and over that exam. And so again, I know that my staff, I'm able to refund them through, um, our agency, but not all social workers have that opportunity. And that is, that is a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra McKnight.
Good morning. I, let me just start by saying that what I've observed. Uh, having worked on a university level, uh, as well as in my practice. I find that, uh, some universities are focusing more on writing papers and, and, uh, group. Projects and not testing. And that is a disadvantage because you have to be test wise. And I think that's where the problem comes in at. Uh, I graduated from Southern University, New Orleans, and one of the things that they stress that we, that people had to take the test wise exam. If they found that you, of course, if they found that you weren't, it, it, you appeared to not have those capabilities. You had to take the test wise course. And that, uh, helped them to be able to understand how to take a test. Because it is knowing how to take the exam. Um, and also life experiences. I've had experience working in different, with different agencies, with different populations, which has helped me to be able to, um. Pass my exam. Now I'm about to sit for my LCSW, so the jury is still out how that's going to occur. But I think that, um, is that exam bias is based on more academic. It's not what we do in our practice, it's what the books, what we've been taught to think. And that is where there's a disparity. Because what you do everyday life as a social worker and what you've taught. May not always overlap.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. So I'm not sure if. I didn't lower someone's hand or if they have another comment. But I think Ms. Stasia Johnson had another comment and I don't see anyone else who's new. So, Ms. Johnson?
Hey, yeah, I did have a, a, another comment. It's Stasia. Uh, I think Ms. Ginger kind of spoke to my first, um, comment was going to be in reference to who was developing the questions and how. Uh, these questions were getting picked. Uh, one thing I did mention, um, I see that Brian had talked about. Uh, just being able to be licensed, um, in multiple states and how having, um. The issue with writing, being, being a licensure for Texas, uh, but I am licensed in Louisiana and Texas. Uh, and I was able to do that because I passed the exam that's recognized in both states. Um, but my first exam had a lot of questions in regards to immigration in the community setting. Uh, I didn't have a lot of cohorts who ran into those types of questions on their exams. Um, but I had an overwhelming, a large amount of questions in reference to Hispanics. Um, and I took my text, my test in Louisiana. Um, so I had a over alarming amount of questions about Hispanics and just how they interact, uh, in the school system. And the community, uh, in their home settings, with their children, with different people and things of that nature. Um, and there wasn't a lot of studying that I did in school. Um, there wasn't a lot of the things that we did in school. We talked about cultural competence. We did hit the highlights of different cultures and races. But as in depth as those questions was asking, I didn't remember, uh, reviewing anything like that in school. Um, and another point I wanted to touch on was Brian's comment in reference to, um, stating that we received advice on. Us preparing for the exam, uh, as if we were a white woman with unlimited resources. Um, it wasn't that, this was something that we needed to process during the timeframe of the exam. But this was something that we processed for months and months while we were studying for the exam. So we had already kind of shifted our mindset to think like that. Um, being a white male, you would kind of have some of the same resources as a white female. So there wouldn't be a need for you to shift that mindset. You would kind of already have it. Um, being in that dynamic, um, I think the advice was given to African American women. To think like white women because like you said, there are not a lot of males who are taking the exam. There are not a lot of males in this field. Um, so that's where the advice comes from. And to my knowledge, uh, anyone that I've provided that advice for, it has been helpful for them as well in taking their exams. Thank you.
Michaela?
Yes, ma'am. Um, good morning, everybody. So I just want to take a little bit of time and just kind of piggyback off of what, um, everyone was saying. But also, um, add in my own, um, commentary. So I just graduated from UTA, um, this past December. And I will say that I feel like UTA's master's program was a very, um, good program. Um, I was originally in a different program, um, from where I got my BSW from, from a school in Illinois. And I don't think, um, that the content that I was originally, um, like the classes I was taking. I don't feel like they were really preparing me, um, for the master's program and taking this test. Um, I do feel like UTA's content, um, and their classes was a way better fit for me. And I just feel like they had a great, um, support as far as like me, um, having questions. And I just feel like there was more support. Um, what I will say is that, um, I do feel like there was a lot of writing. Um, in that program and I feel like that time that I took in the class that is called an integrated seminar. Um, and it goes pretty much with our, um, internship. I felt like that class, I really could have benefited more if it was like a test prep class. And it was getting me ready for the LMSW. Um, I am, I just scheduled to take the test March twentieth. And I do have like a lot of anxiety with getting ready and prepping myself. Um, I've taken two exams thus far, um, practice exams, and I have not done well. Um, on those practice exams, so that is kind of like making me nervous. I will say that I've always been a pretty great test taker. I've usually never had to study. Um, and I usually like graphs, graph content like really easily. Um, but I am really concerned when it comes to this test. Um, there is a lot of money that goes into the test, um, the two hundred and thirty dollars for the exam. Then the preapproval, I think was sixty dollars. Um, so I'm a single mother. I don't have a lot of money to, um, spend. With retaking the test. Um, so that is a little concerning for me. Um, that's another fact that's concerning. Um, but I do appreciate, um, everybody's feedback today. Um, and I just want to say that I have a lot of anxiety going into this. Um, so that's just what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Melissa again. I did raise my hand again. I'm not sure if you think, if you thought it was still raised from my other comment. Question. Okay, I'm sorry. And I just want, I just had, uh, I wanted to second what Ms. McKnight said. Is that I think that the social work programs, MSW program, kind of like the one I'm in right now. They do concentrate a lot on papers and doing group, uh, project group work. Um, versus the actual test taking. Um, I even, in one of my classes, I asked the professor, how is this going to help us pass the exam? Um, and so maybe, maybe the programs need to incorporate before you graduate a testing prep class. You know, maybe that might be something that could help. I don't know. I don't know if any other MSW programs have that in place right now. But I know that the one I'm currently in does not, but maybe that could be something that could be incorporated into the. That CSWE could incorporate into future MSW programs. That's it. Thank you.
Kimberly Amara?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, what I was going to say is, I think, um, to the point of like the test taking committee. That like looks at the questions. Um, I went through that process. I wasn't selected at the end of the day, but I really feel like a big chunk of it. Because the, based on the picture that you pulled up, that was a pretty diverse group of folks. But I think that the criteria like to actually have a question admitted is flawed or biased or whatever. So when you go into the exam, even though, you know, there's, you know, a diverse group of people. Who are examining the question for admittance to be on the actual test. Um, that actual criteria that they're utilizing, that was maybe written, you know, is, is still skewed. Um, so I think that that's probably an issue. Um, and then I also do agree about the writing because I too graduated from UTA. And we focus a lot on group projects, a lot on writing. Um, and to the young lady who is, has a test anxiety, um. Um, and to the young lady who is has a test anxiety, um, I'm just just sharing this with you. I failed of my two as well, but I passed when I sat for the exam. But then again, I do feel like um, it's just more so about um, what the um, lady earlier spoke about as far as just knowing how to take the test until there's like mass change across the board. I just think that that's something that we're going to have to learn how to do. Um, is learn how to take the test. So the advice about going into the exam as if you're a white woman with no resources, even from the standpoint of the gentleman who spoke and said that he felt like he took the test because he's a man, you know, men typically are much more like to the point in black and white and you know, maybe there's a lot more gray area for women. And that's, those are just generalizations, but I do think that once we start to look at just that some of the systems and you know, even from how we, you know, come in with our own preconceived notions, the exam really doesn't serve the vast majority of people that actually sit for the test. Um, and so like I said, I'll always say that I think I had an advantage not coming in with a lot of the gray area. And I hate to say it that way, but a lot of the things that we get um, if you are a BSW, that's not to say that that's bad, but the exam just doesn't teach to that. And then you also have professors who don't even talk about the exam. Um, so that's just kind of like my last little feedback.
Thank you. H Martinez, you have comment?
Yeah, um, yes, um, sorry. I don't know how much this would actually be beneficial. I'm actually in one of my, um, the second to the last semester of my MSW program. Um, I sincerely apologize. I did not remember everybody's name. I'm currently at work, so I'm looking at two different screens. Um, but I am, as I've gotten older, I'm forty-two, I have noticed myself personally. I get more test anxiety. Um, I don't know where that comes from. That's something that I'm going to have to address myself. I have to turn off, and I I'm not saying everybody's experiences do not, I'm not discounting everybody's experience, but personally, it's it's noise to for me because I I don't want to add that to the anxiety I already have. Um, I do not feel that my program is preparing me to take the test. That's um, just how I feel. And again, I I know that's something with the school and not the the committee. Um, but it is concerning to me that so many people have these experiences. My concern is when I take it, I'm going to have to have this mentality of this quote utopian world that doesn't exist in the real world. Um, I did test for um, EC through six generalist teaching certification. And when I went in, uh, someone had to tell me the something similar about like just you have to pretend that it's a perfect world. We know we don't work in a perfect world. We, things do not, uh, everybody does not fit in a box. So I do have concerns about taking the test and and how my thought process is going to be being a social worker. Um, with that being said, I do feel like I'm set up to maybe be a little bit more successful. I'm not gonna say that I'll actually pass on my first time. But my my BA is in psychology. Um, my, I have experience with children and family, but my specialty track is in aging. And I chose a different track than what I know of to prepare myself for the test because several people have told me that the test is going to cover all of the areas, even though we in the MSW program, we specialize in one general area. Um, that's it. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Acacia Voorhees?
Hi, good morning. Um, I'm currently a MSW student. I'm in my second to last semester of graduating. Um, I am attending a school that's out of state because I'm a, I'm a veteran, so I've had to move around a lot and online school has worked better for me. But I will say that um, I feel like my program has not been preparing us as students well for preparing for the uh, for examination as well. Um, the school focuses a lot on writing papers, uh, between three-page papers to sixteen-page papers when it's research-based. Um, there's been no quizzes to help encourage us to learn how the ASWB test asks questions. I've done some practice tests on my own um, to to prepare myself for that experience. And one test that I took in particular was ten questions. The first five I got wrong. But when I learned how to speak like the test and 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 think like the test, I was able to pass the last five with correct scores. Um, um, back to back. So I think that along with trying to teach us how to become social work students, the way that this test is asking us to perform as social workers is like people have been saying, acting like um, performing in a perfect world setting. And I just wanted to piggyback about the comment about um, people saying that that there's encouragement to think like a white woman with no resources. And I'm not sure who the gentleman was that spoke and said that he hasn't had to have that experience. Well, that's because he, you're a white male and it's hard for you to understand the experience of people of color that have to naturally code switch in multiple professional environments where as a black person, you can't present yourself as yourself authen- authentically. And you already have these power dynamics working against you. So when you add a standardized test on top of that and you already have to come in thinking outside of yourself to pass, just to get this to pass and then go into your field and perform as the field needs you to and as your clients need you to, there is absolutely a disconnect. And what I would like to see is more questions about why these disparities are happening and not justifications about the personal like experiences that might not be contributing to it because of because you are a white counterpart that's taking the test. I would also like to see more discussion about ways to maybe encourage a one-time fee for all people that take this exam. And that you have multiple attempts to pass it rather than continuing to profit on these people's experiences and having to go through the anxiety of taking this test over and over again and the mental and emotional trauma that comes with that. As well as not putting most of the responsibility on the universities to make sure students pass and creating more resources that are free for people to use to pass this exam that comes from the ASWB or CSWE.
Thank you. Janine, you have a follow-up comment?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to piggyback off of quite a few individuals that have uh, expressed their struggle with test anxiety. Um, as I've already stated before, I felt four times and I definitely believe test anxiety plays a major uh, part in me failing exam. Um, also, when it comes to my experience with completing my MSW program, there was a lot of focus on just writing papers and writing papers, or I should just say, writing is a strong suit of mine. So to think about the many a times that I failed my test versus how easy it was to just breeze through my MSW program. As I already stated, it's just mentally and emotionally exhausting to think that I could go through my MSW program with such a breeze, but have to still struggle with trying to pass an exam that I don't feel like my program actually prepared me for. I do feel as though it would have been beneficial if after every class, we had to complete some kind of um, practice exam that correlates uh, directly with the KSA's of the exam. So I was just wondering if the the board could really consider um, test the test anxiety being a major struggle for a lot of people. And is there any way that they would consider to have the number of questions be limited? Because I know there are a hundred and seventy questions on the exam. But for the twenty, like if it's not going to be included in the final passing or failing score, why is there a need to have the twenty additional questions? Because in my experience, I feel as though when it comes to me taking the the exam, the endurance and like just the stamina of keeping that focus and not allowing my anxiety to make me like rush through the exam. I feel as though having just a smaller number of questions, not saying that they have to take it down a lot, but maybe just the twenty, like we don't need the twenty questions there for someone to try to pass the test. Um, yeah, that's pretty much my my input. Thank you.
Thank you.
As we, as we wrap up this section, because we're, we're moving on to the next one. Is that right, Sarah? It's at ten?
Correct.
So Janine, I will tell you and and everybody listening about the exam, one of the changes that ASWB is incorporating is sort of along the line that that you were talking about. They are moving so currently the exam is four answer choices per item. They are moving to three answer choices per item. Um, and they will incorporate those into future exams. I don't know dates, timeframes of of how that's happening. I just know that I was in a meeting in November and that was the plan that that they uh, informed us of is that they will move to three answer multiple choices. So that will take, you know, twenty-five percent of the reading of answers away and give you, you know, a one in three instead of a one in four chance um, on on ruling out only two wrong selections. So, but I want to thank y'all all. I've taken uh, explicit notes today and 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 listening. And this will be um, this information from today, the written comments as well. Sarah has those and they were sent in and we will uh, address this at our board meeting on May the fifth. Is that the right? May the fifth. Okay. Thank y'all. Our next topic that we're gonna talk about in this town hall meeting is the um, the 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 board uh, made a decision to remove hours for continuing education units for individuals who served as uh, field instructors. So we are now um, open to discussion about how that decision has impacted um, the field of practice. So Sarah, I'll let you take over now.
So while people uh, find their raise hand feature on that topic, I'd just like to um, in in case it's useful for those who are still in their MSW programs or their bachelor's programs. Some, some schools do require their students to attempt the exam while they're still in school and Texas law allows you to do so if you're in your last semester. Also, ASWB has um, resources for educators. I've, I've signed up for an event um, that's a, that's for educators, just so I could keep myself informed. I think that's coming up in February. So in case that's useful information for you. And thank you again for attending and sharing your experiences today. Mr. Francis?
Yes, uh, thank you again for the opportunity to speak today and really just wanted to say thanks again for that amazingly productive, inviting, warm, empathetic and and just well facilitated discussion. Um, and I just want to thank Chair Brumley and um, Sarah for asking questions and for really inviting people to bring in their experiences. So that that was just absolutely fantastic and I took wonderful notes as well. Um, when it comes to the continuing education piece, um, I know that ultimately the rules were aligned in continuing education to make it easier for staff. A hundred percent understand. BHAC needs that opportunity to sort of understand what continuing education looks like. But social work is unique and because we have those bachelor's and master's level license, we sort of stand out as different. And that creates, I think, situations in school where the internship is so vital to the process. And you have people in macro placements, you have people in clinical placements and mezzo across the board. And finding supervision for that is a very key component. It really is such an important part of the education process to gain that experience. Currently, the rules do allow for someone in a classroom setting to provide or to receive five hours of continuing education. And I really think that those five hours should be extended to someone who is supervising an intern. The, you talk about social work fundamental values. You get into all of those pieces that actually really point towards licensure in the exam and hopefully um, support um, passage over there. But that also really create a dynamic relationship where the supervisor is learning from the intern, intern is learning. And it's not just how do you do the work in the field placement, it's how do you really grow as a social worker? And so I very much encourage um, the board to add rules. Um, I can share some language we have. It's very simple on um, just similar to what you get for classroom setting, five hours per per renewal period. Um, I think the only recommendation I would sort of think of adding is just to ensure that you have to do it for at least one semester. Um, so that it at least gives you that uh, ability to stay in there with it. Um, but that if you see those interns through, um, you should receive that time. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak and and I look forward to hopefully seeing some changes in the rules here in this area.
Thank you, Will.
Mariah Boone?
Hello, um, I am a field education director in South Texas. And I want to um, to express my agreement with what Will just said, really. Um, I really, I think our field instructors are, should be able to receive field um, continuing education credit based on sort of two areas. One, the one that Will was mentioning that they are essentially teaching a great deal of things to our students, just like those of us who are teaching actual classes. And since we are eligible when we teach a university course for up to five hours per renewal period, it it only makes sense that field instructors also should be. Um, oh, the other side of it is that field instructors also learn a lot of content in their process a- as a field instructor. They, they um, they have to be really, really well-informed on our competencies, our professional behaviors and observable components, our emerge, you know, emerging issues in practice. Um, it it is a, it is a, a quite an academic undertaking to learn all the things that you need to learn to be an effective field instructor. And social work is very different in some ways than than the other disciplines governed by BHAC. Our, our field placements are our signature pedagogy. They are, they are extremely structured and our curriculums are aligned around them in a way that is just not true of the other disciplines. So I really hope like I I support in ASW's um, hope that we will at least get five hours per renewal period um, for field instructors. Um, put back into the code, please. Thank you.
Mariah, do you mind giving a little more insight into how you see the link between um, a field educator or a field instructor out in the field, how they are learning along with students?
Absolutely. Um, th- they I I think if when, when I was in periods of, looking back at my own practice, when I was in periods of time when I did not have a student versus when I did, um, you know, because before I worked at university, obviously I worked in agencies and I did field instruction for students as well. And before I had students, I, you know, it'd been a while since I got my degree. I didn't remember all about the nine competencies and the thirty-one observable components. You know, I mean, you, you don't, th- the, those kinds of things aren't, aren't the kind of things that you remember as as clearly as time goes on. But when I had to take in students and I had to supervise them, um, I, I had to refamiliarize myself with all of that material. And it was a great deal of material and it really helped my practice because you know, you can get, you can get a little tight. You can get a little um, a little wrapped up in the day-to-day at your agency. You know, things get very busy. We're always under-resourced in in most of our agencies and and sometimes you you really get into the, this is the next thing I need to do and the next thing I need to do and the next thing I need to do. And you don't always think as hard about why you're doing all of it every day. But when you're having to work with those competencies and professional behaviors with your student regularly every day, all of that comes back to you. And, and you find yourself, you know, it's a refresher on the kind of critical examination you need to be doing in, in all of your interactions with in, in all of your interactions with clients, you know, it, it helps you be the best social worker that you can be. Plus, you know, a, as a professor, I'm always telling my students that they have to be lifelong learners and you know, you try to do that in practice, but when you, when you have, when you're realizing that you have to be up on the emerging practices that your students are learning in school, you have to learn them too in order to adequately supervise them. Um, it, that, there's really a great, and you have to learn about teaching strategies, you have to learn about supervision, you have to learn about, you know, diverse populations that you may not have had experience with before. So, so yeah, there's, there's so much you have to learn on that side. And then, and then, of course, like I said, and as, as Will was talking about, there's also the teaching part as well, you know, that you're also literally teaching so much to the students.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that addition.
Thank you.
Jamie Parker?
Hello again. Thank you so much. I'm Jamie Parker. I'm practicum director at the University of Houston Graduate College of Social Work. I appreciate y'all putting this back on the agenda, allowing us space to talk about it. And I want to thank the other practicum directors that are here and Will Francis for his continued advocacy on this effort. So for our program alone, we work with over two hundred social work practitioners who volunteer to serve in this role. And I think that while students can add to an agency's capacity and ability to serve clients in the community, students also require a large amount of time and energy. We have really framed uh for years, we have used this requirement of allowing continuing education, allowing practicum instruction to count as continuing education as a way to frame the activity. So we have practicum instructors who have been practicum instructors for over twenty years. And having a student connects them to what's being taught inside the college, inside the classroom. It increases their ability to have conversations about what is being taught today as well as keeping them connected to those nine competencies and behaviors which people are going to continue to bring up because social work practitioners in the community are actually heavily relied on as the main source to assess students on all of those measures. So even faculty members inside the college do not assess students on all nine competencies and all thirty-three behaviors. Social work volunteer practitioners in the community are the ones who are charged with doing that. I also think it was a huge point of pride when I was in national spaces with other practicum directors around the country that Texas recognized practicum instruction as a continuing education activity because um it made sense and I was able to have conversation and help other people around the country figure out ways that they could approach their social work boards and advocate to change their codes to allow this to count. Um, uh, do I think that social work practitioners are still going to show up and continue to assist us in educating our students? I do think that they will continue to do that. Um, however, I do think this was like the one thing that we had um that we could offer them that was in a very small way acknowledging the tremendous amount of time and effort and energy that they're putting into social work students that are going to join the social work workforce. So I do, I think there's actually a case to be made for practicum instruction counting as ethics hours in the code because of the way that practitioners have to stay up on laws and rules and guidelines. And all of the things that are outlined as ethical CEs, but also any inclusion or putting back in the code of the ability to count practicum instruction as continuing education would be greatly appreciated from those of us who are in the trenches actively and always recruiting social work practitioners to add on to their already stretched caseloads to help us educate our students and build our workforce in Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any other comment? I see thirty-four attendees.
And, and just to note, we, we did receive um written document, uh, written comments from the Texas Field Educators Consortium. So thank you all for submitting those and writing to us and those will also be uh part of our board meeting on May the fifth.
May Hart, you have comment?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hart and I have been a field instructor for various universities throughout my um career as a, as a social worker, as a licensed social worker. And I just wanted to mention that the shift in social work to a social work education to online and virtual classes means that the social work, the field instructor for social work students has really become uh a kind of a gatekeeper. We are oftentimes the first face-to-face instructors for students that are in a program. Um, in particular, we super, my program supervises graduate level social work interns from various universities. And the information that I have provided to students over the years, the fifteen years I've been a field instructor has really been um oftentimes the first that my students hear of the social work exam, the social work exam process, where to find the, the governing body of social work for Texas, where to find the governing body uh for national social workers, how the process comes together uh for them. And the um, and I would second, or uh I would second the comment earlier about the ethics. Um, so much of the field practicum is the student's first introduction to face-to-face with a client and there can't be interaction with a client without a constant reminder of the ethics surrounding each of those encounters. Uh, the other instrumental part that a field instructor plays is helping that student bring their theory from the classroom, combine it with the practice in the field. Um, and to echo all the comments earlier, while reminding them that is not really how you're supposed to take the exam. You need to kind of separate uh the exam is in the perfect world. But how does that theory apply in the real world when you are, when you are working with people in crisis that have limited resources? And that's the part of the field instruction that cannot happen in the classroom and yet um, you know, will we continue to offer to be field instructors? Yes, because there is that component of giving back to our profession. However, when you're doing social work, field instruction for three semesters out of the year, it really kind of leaves you with a limited amount of time to get all of your CEUs in, in your two-year period of licensing. So having that five hours is, in my opinion, um, extremely helpful and beneficial in keeping our interns um on that uh schedule in our agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Sarah, did we lose you?
Uh, yes, we did.
Well, Daryl, could you have the ability to open Whitney loose?
I, I do. Okay, Ms. Loose, you got a comment?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Um, Whitney Loose again, uh, Director of Field Education at Baylor University and also co-chair of TFEK uh Texas Field Educators Consortium. Thank you so much for uh hearing public comment on this issue. It was so great to hear from a uh field instructor just now um who really did a wonderful job of showing the ways that uh field instructors are heavily heavily relied upon in our um social work education process. And they, we have for a long time, and I know many programs have um referred to our field instructors as field faculty. We really see them as uh teachers alongside the faculty in universities teaching uh students and doing teaching that we can't do in a classroom. Their role is, is one of teaching. So it only makes sense that they would uh earn continuing education hours for that very important and integral role as teachers. Um, and I would say, I would echo the comments of others that our field instructors um do assess in ways that faculty who are getting credit um five hours per renewal period for teaching. Um, they aren't having to assess in the same way for all of the competency areas that our field instructors are in the field. Um, and our field instructors are expected to be knowledgeable in so many areas and to keep up with um various trends and uh challenges in the field and um are guiding students through navigating um new challenges um and teaching them. I think about the role of field instructors during the pandemic um and in dealing with um with various challenges that, that occur and thinking about anti-racism and um equity and our field instructors have been the ones helping students to see um how their practice reflects um their new knowledge and the way that they are facing uh different challenges. I would also say um thank you to the board for um listening. I think part of what has been difficult with the change in CEs for field instructors is that it happens quickly and during a semester after field instructors had already taken on students. And so having some um opportunity to discuss and know about you know, is this possibly going to change is really helpful so that we can be part of the discussion. Um, that field instructors can be part of the discussion. So I hope that the board will continue to have a process like that where as much as possible, those who are affected can speak in to the changes that are being made um and at least give their um perspective. So again, I would certainly support um five CEs per renewal, uh renewal period for field instructors. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney. Looks like Sarah's making a way back. Her internet went down, so she's headed back there, Sarah. Sarah, I don't, or Daryl, I don't see any more hands. Is there anyone else that would like to give input as to CEUs for social, Chantel Collins?
Daryl, are you driving or am I?
I have given the keys back to you.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm here. I'm a field instructor for, well, let me start off. Good morning. I'm Dr. Chantel Collins from MHMR Tarrant County and I serve as a capacity as a field instructor. But I've been here since eight-thirty, so I kind of fall into the group of those individuals who had trouble with licensure, but I went on to get my doctoral degree in DH in um social work. So I wanted to speak on behalf of those field instructors who are currently licensed and they're unable to get the CEUs that they need. So I'm in the capacity speaking in support for my colleagues who are doing the work as I, who are pouring into social workers because there's a shortage even in the community behavioral health for social workers. So I'm afraid that if we take the CEU component away, we'll lose other licensed social workers who are field instructors in community agencies. So I'm support of um the board thinking about continuing with those CEUs for those field instructors.
Thank you, Dr. Collins.
I, I've got a question for the group on this. Is there a, is there a number of hours that if we granted credit for that you guys think it would improve your recruitment for supervisors in this area? I'm not looking to hold anybody anything. I'm just trying to get some rough ideas of, hey, if you guys offered this kind of credit, we could probably recruit more supervisors into the area.
Mariah Boone?
Thank you. Um, I will say that I, I mean, I, on the one hand, I think that our field instructors often do this out of their, you know, their, their deep commitment to the good of the social work profession. I, I don't, you know, it, they, it it's, it's not as clear of a relationship as that. Um, I think what, what used to be in the, in the statute that where we, they were able to get um you know, up to five hours a semester, but no more than than I think it was.
I think it was twenty.
Yeah, twenty, right. No more than twenty in the renewal period was ample. Um, I think what could maybe even, what if you what used to be would be perfect, maybe improved by um what um, I think Jamie and Whitney were saying about making it eligible for ethics hours. I think, I think that it is, it definitely should qualify for ethics hours given all of the um all of the ethics that it involves in teaching and learning to be able to do it. I think that would definitely raise its attractiveness. Um, but but I, but, but I also, um, you know, I, I, I think what we had before was, was, was a very good, you know, a very good amount.
Mariah, do, I mean, do we have a, would you say we have a shortage of supervisors now?
Yes, I mean, I think what this, but I, I mean, in, in my own part of the state, the reason that we have a shortage of supervisors is because we have a shortage of social workers. Um, in, in my part of the state, it's because, I mean, it's, it's, I don't have people telling me no very often, but the, but the truth is, we just don't, we just don't have very many social workers. That's, you know, that's, that's um, and the ones that we do have are highly concentrated in um in practice areas like, like hospital social work where, you know, there are other other um, you know, like hospital accreditation reasons and things why they have to be hiring licensed social workers. Um, and so other practice areas are really lacking a social work presence. Um, my own master's program only started in twenty-seventeen. So they, so we're growing those MSWs now, but, but, but the coastal bend where, where I am has long been a, a desert for, of MSWs, you know, and so I think one of the big reasons we don't we have a shortage is because we don't have that many social workers. Um, the social workers we do have are so hardworking. Um, you know, they it isn't that they have to be convinced to do this so much as that they are doing it and they're working so hard and they're learning so much. And they're doing it purely out of the goodness of their hearts and they're out of their commitment to the profession. And they, they deserve, they deserve credit for all of the, the teaching and the learning that they're doing in that process.
My, my concern with just returning to this, the way things were is we've got a shortage. I thi- I think it's probably safe to say we've got a shortage. But we had a shortage under the old system, so that wasn't helping us. So what do we do to, what do we do to improve that? Because just, just going back to the way it was, is it going to improve the situation any? So how do we actually make it better? Is, is what I'm trying to figure out.
Ms. Boone, did you want to reply to Daryl's statement?
If, if that's all right, ma'am. Mm-hmm. Um, I, I do think including the credit for ethics would make it better. But honestly, I also think one side of making it better is more But honestly, I also think one side of making it better is more to the issue that we spoke about earlier today. I think we, you know, expanding licensure to more social workers, you know, in an equitable way would also help.
Thank you. Jamie Parker?
Thank you. I think Mariah did a good job. I had raised my hand as a response to Darryl's questions. Because I was going to say that under the old system with twenty CE's, it was in a two-year renewal cycle, we would, it was five CEUs per semester and most social work students are in a practicum placement over the course of two semesters. So in that two-year cycle, like a fall, spring, fall, spring is what would count towards those twenty CEUs that, up to twenty, that a practitioner could elect to use. So I think that that was, or it, it felt appropriate, that amount. And I hear what you're saying about fixing the shortage of social workers and agree with Mariah, but I also think we haven't seen yet the impact of the change in CE's. So for example, large institutions like the VA Medical Center, which has a large number, a hundred and sixty plus social workers in the Houston area, their educational coordinator, one of the pieces that they're using to recruit even inside their organization is that the CE advantage of taking on a student adds on to the top of their load. And so when that is no longer an advantage, I think we'll, we will start to see if that really does impact our ability to retain practicum instructors. So I was just answering. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Whitney Luce?
Thank you. So I agree with what's been said, and I think we really don't know what the impact is thus far. And one other thing is that one way that many of us in social work, field education are trying to help broaden the scope of social work and to meet needs and get more social workers into maybe shortage areas is by placing students at agencies or organizations that do not have a social worker on staff. And then having an off-site field instructor who is the, the social work field instructor for that student. And that is a way that students can help to reach people in that agency. They can help to expand the knowledge of what social workers do and can do in an agency. And I do think that it is harder to recruit off-site field instructors. And clearly, it is harder to recruit field instructors, period, without being able to offer continuing education, or not offer, but let them know that they would receive continuing education hours for that. But especially the off-site field instructors, which is a really important role, especially in areas. So we have an online program now, and so I see across the state more in a different way than I did maybe five years ago. And it, it will be harder to, and is harder to recruit off-site field instructors who don't already have a vested interest in that particular agency. So maybe they don't have a boss saying, well, we're taking interns because we need that help. And but having that CEU component does encourage off-site field instructors to step in, which does really serve the profession by helping students to get into new areas. And in maybe underserved communities where there's not that many social workers and there aren't as many at different agencies. So that's another point to consider, I think.
Thank you. Caitlin East?
Good morning, everyone. I'm the Director of Field Education at Abilene Christian University, and I appreciate y'all hearing from folks today. Whitney actually took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to bring up the point of off-site supervisors. In response to the question earlier, it would directly affect my ability to recruit. I'm out in West Texas. And often we have students who are placed within agencies that do require an off-site supervisor because of the shortage that we were discussing earlier. Compounded by the licensing requirements. And so I rely heavily on off-site supervisors, specifically at the graduate level for my students. And what we're asking them to do is to provide an hour a week of supervision at a minimum. And then be available for these students as they navigate a practicum that may not have a social worker there. And so the ability and willingness to be available to these students, plus to the point that's already made, providing very direct teaching as it relates to ethics because our students are navigating things from a social work paradigm and need that ethical teaching has been so critical for our students. And as I've spoken to field instructors in my area about this change, they have all referenced how this really affects their ability to provide that type of off-site supervision and that level that we're looking at, just simply because of time constraints. So if they are not receiving the CE's, then they have less time to supervise our students in this capacity because they have to seek out these CE's in a different capacity. And so every state, every part of the state is different. You know, we see recruitment issues in varying ways across the state, but in our area of West Texas, there is absolutely a correlation to our CE provision and my ability to recruit strong off-site supervisors especially. So, thank you.
Thank you. David Marston?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak with y'all today. I really appreciate it. I hadn't planned on saying much, but I, I feel like I have a perspective that I want to offer. I do serve currently or have historically served as one of about three or four field instructors for my organization. And I enjoy it. I enjoy teaching. I enjoy helping connect classroom theoretical experiences to a practical, real-world environment. But, but also I don't like the, the whole idea of, of saying, well, they'll do it for nothing. They'll do it just to give back to the profession. They'll do it just because they love what they do. Because I meet all those criteria, but I also enjoy being compensated. And, you know, it reminds me of some of the arguments that you used to hear historically about, well, is social work even a profession? Maybe these good-hearted people will just do it all for free. They don't have to be compensated. I think that's moving us in the wrong direction. I think Darryl asked a great question. What do we need to do to make it even better? And Darryl, I wish I had more of an answer for you. I don't know for sure, but I do know what I think will make it worse. And I do know what I think will make it worse at several different levels. And that is to remove any kind of compensation from the process now. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate the work that y'all do, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. I have social worker at Texas Advocacy. You have comment?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. I forgot to change my title there. My name is Sarah Lackey. I'm a social worker at Texas Advocacy Project. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for hosting this town hall. It's been really informative and especially the, the first half as well, I think was so beneficial. A little about my background, I've been a field instructor since 2011, off and on, depending on the job site and if, if they were able to host interns. I'm currently hosting two BSW interns and one MSW intern. I've worked with UT Austin, St. Edward's, Baylor, and Texas State. I was really disappointed to see the change in continuing education for field instructors, and I would like for this decision to be reversed. I also agree with those that are saying that it should count as ethical hours as well. I have three major concerns about it. The first, as Ms. Boone stated earlier, being a field instructor requires an immense amount of time and effort. And I believe that if you're doing field instruction correctly, you're putting more effort in as a field instructor than your agency is actually getting out of the interns in terms of their actual work, their actual output with the clients or with the projects that they're doing. I spend several hours every single week devoted to just being a field instructor. This includes providing comprehensive training at the start of the placement, which lasts for weeks. It includes ensuring that our interns have meaningful experiences that fall into the core competencies. It includes providing an hour of supervision with meaningful space for reflection. And also making sure that our agency fully embraces the interns and provides helpful interdisciplinary interaction. If I gave a very conservative estimate of the time I put in as a field instructor, I would say about five hours a week. So if I multiply this out for a semester, it would be about eighty hours a semester. My second concern is I fear that a lot of social workers are going to choose to no longer be field instructors due to this change. Every semester, I get emails and calls from one or more universities about students who have no field placement as the semester is about to start. So I don't think we can afford any loss there. And I know some people have said that they're in an area of Texas where there just aren't enough social workers. I'm, I'm, I'm not in that position. I'm in Central Texas, so we don't have a shortage of social workers. But there does seem to be a shortage of, of field instructors. And lastly, being a field instructor is very challenging. It forces me to stay up to date with evidence-based practices as well as emerging ideas in the field that could benefit my clients. I have to continually read and research in order to support my students in the fields and theories that they are exploring. I have to provide trauma-informed supervision, which, which helps me to provide trauma-informed interaction for my clients. And there's a lot of pressure on field instructors to be extremely self-aware and ethical because we are the student's very first experience in the real world. We are their introduction to social work in the real world. And I can honestly say that more of my professional development comes out of my time with interns than it comes out of, you know, any conferences or webinars that I attend. I get so much more out of being a field instructor towards my professional development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to give public comment? Darryl or Chair Bromley, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I, I don't. I would, I would, well, I sort of do. So one of the TFEC members, Whitney, somebody that, that's out there. Would, would y'all give sort of a rundown on the number of clock hours that a social work field student is required to commit to their internship at both the undergraduate and graduate level? And, and sort of link that up so that everybody understands the timeframe that they're, or the amount of time they're committing to a student? I don't know. Jamie, I see Jamie's still there. What about, I don't know if Whitney's still, yeah, Whitney's still there. One of y'all, so Jamie, so let Jamie talk.
Sure, thank you. So per CSWE accreditation standards, it is for a BSW only four hundred clock hours of practicum education built into the curriculum. And then for an MSW full-program student who doesn't have a BSW, it's nine hundred clock hours. So if you have a BSW, you would come into the MSW program and do five hundred hours because you would have already earned four hundred clock hours in your BSW program. But if you don't have a BSW, then it's nine hundred clock hours built into the curriculum, and that's the minimum. Some programs require over those hours. That is roughly sixteen hours a week that a student should be doing practicum work if that's in a fall-spring long semester. And that would be a minimum of fifteen hours of supervision given by a practicum instructor. So I think as has already been outlined, practicum instructors are usually giving a lot more than fifteen hours over the course of a whole semester and sometimes are with a student for the full sixteen hours each week. But those are kind of the minimum standards that frame the expectation from CSWE.
Okay, thank you for that, Jamie. I don't, I don't have any other questions, Sarah. I don't know if Darryl does.
And I don't see any other hands raised. We do have twenty-three attendees logged in. Does anyone else like to give public comment?
Well, I don't see any hands going up, so I guess I'll take the opportunity to invite you all back on May fifth. Where we will have our board meeting. It will be at eight thirty on Zoom again this time. So you can hear the board discuss and, and maybe process some of the information that you've that we've, that I've received today before the whole board. So I really want to thank everybody for coming. And we had a, or I at least did, and I know Sarah had a internet breakdown in the middle, but it's been a, a rough start to the day. So we are thawing out here in northeast Texas, so it's at least thirty-three degrees and I see it melted. So I'm proud for that. Everybody stay warm. And with nothing else, I really, I really want to extend my appreciation to everybody that took time to speak to us and let us know the information as you see it out in the community. That's always beneficial to us as a board.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll, I'll stop the recording and we'll end.
Sarah, it, it, it has been recorded and it will be published on our YouTube channel. Is that right, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
It may take a, a few days, but that's, that's the goal. And then it'll be available to the public and to the board members.
Okay. All right. Well, thank y'all all very much.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you especially to Director Spinks for taking over when my internet bobbled. I don't know what happened. Have a great day.
All right, bye-bye.